I would like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. Your goodness to us is overflowing. We just thank you for past few days where we could gather with family and friends and be thankful to you for all that you provided for us. And now, as we move into the Christmas holiday season, God, I just pray that your blessings will continue to flow. We thank you for our mayor, for this council, and God, we are thank you for the hope that now is a reality outside these walls with the public. And we thank you for our citizens, what they mean to us. Pray that, God, everything we do will be because of them and the sacrifice they've made to be here. We thank you for your son, Jesus. Pray that you'll continue to help us as we walk daily, to keep our focus on you, and we promise to give you the praise at the end of the day in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in city council meeting held on November 22nd. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 18th through the 24th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Number seven on the agenda is proclamations. I don't believe we have any today, do we? No? Okay. All right. Number eight, unfinished business. We have none today. So moving right along to number nine. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 1120 and 1130 Goodyear Avenue from R2 Multiple Family Residence District to O1 Office District. The owners have been approached by a potential buyer who wants to construct a medical office at this location. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. All right. Number 10 on the agenda is our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 207 Second Street North in District 2, Waleed Abasi, subject to a mortgage in favor of Waleed Abasi being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder and Department. This case involves commercial property in East Gadsden. We filed the case in July of last year. There have been no improvements. There was a permit taken out in November. No work has been done on that. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council? Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 11, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1400 Walnut Street in District 5, Jackie Jordan, subject to a mortgage in favor of Willie K. Griffin and Alice Ruth McCoy Griffin, subject to a mortgage of City of Gadsden being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned structure. We filed it in October of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council? Move to abate. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 12, our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien on property at 2000 Rainbow Drive in District 4, Robert Chapman, mortgage in favor of Joe Ronald Johnson and wife Betty A. Johnson and Joe Ronald Johnson and wife Betty A. Johnson in care of Jim Enzer being the last known owners. This is for demolition work that has already been performed, and the amount is $4,191.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? All right. What is the pleasure of this council? Being that it's in my district, I drive by it every day, I'm in favor of proceeding, moving forward with this. Second. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution awarding bid number 3487 for body armor concealable ballistic vests. The Purchasing Department has recommended the bid be awarded to Gulf State Distributors Incorporated. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
A quick question, Council President, and it doesn't really matter, I guess. I know this is grant funding, but did we ever get a final number on how many of those vests we were going to be purchasing? I know it's a, the quote is per vest. I just didn't know if we ever got a final number.
You know, I'm not sure. I know, I think Captain is looking in a folder. Give him a second to do that.
It's going to be based on how many people retire, because if they retire and we hire new people, then they'll, they'll have to have a vest.
Gotcha.
Well, it also bases the vests are good for five years, and it just depends on how many, and Paul may know, how many are going to be expiring soon.
Yeah.
So the number can fluctuate, because anytime we hire somebody, then we're going to have to purchase a vest for them, because they're specifically fitted to them. Their body's actually measured for it.
So, I mean, basically, y'all take the grant funding, and it's used as needed to provide vests as required, either for them being out of date or for new hires or...
And if we're lucky, we won't have enough money, and we won't have to pay for all of it.
Right.
In other words, if we're lucky and able to hire enough people, then we'll...
Exactly, yeah. Hopefully, we get to spend all this money on new vests. I got it.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Captain Cody, thank you, Chief. All right. Clerk, will you take?
We don't actually have a motion yet.
We need a motion? Would anybody like to make a motion to adopt this resolution? Second. Now, is there any discussion, which we've already had? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. Number 14 is a resolution awarding bid number 3488 for a 2022 or newer two-wheel-drive crew cab midsize pickup truck. The fleet maintenance manager and NEAPA coordinator and the purchasing department have recommended that the bid be awarded to Donahue Chevrolet LLC, and the amount is The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3489 for new reel grinder and bed knife grinder. The fleet maintenance manager and NEAPA coordinator and the purchasing department have recommended the bid be awarded to Jerry Pike Company. The amounts are $55,993 and $29,403. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion?
Only thing I'll say is I expect my score to drop by at least five strokes once this thing gets going.
That's right. This is for the Twin Bridges Golf Course.
Yeah.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates Incorporated. This is for environmental engineering and construction services for the underground storage tank closure at City Hall, and the amount is $31,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Heath, I know we talked about this last week at, I guess, the pre-council, but maybe for the transparency, would you give a brief 30,000 overview?
Absolutely. So we do have an underground storage tank that is a diesel storage tank for a backup emergency generator at City Hall. That tank is experiencing some issues. It is also just overall outdated a bit with the way that we keep up with the volume, inflow, outflow, et cetera. There's some deterioration, there's not deterioration on the tank yet, but there's some cathodic protection that keeps it from deteriorating that is starting to fail as well, meaning in the next couple of years, we'll have to make some further investment on this tank. So we have opted to go ahead and remove this tank and install a much smaller above-ground storage tank that we can access and actually remove and relocate to another facility as we choose to do so. This contract includes all of the environmental testing, all of the ATM correspondence that's required to go through these steps, just in one fell swoop. So it should be done early next year, pending the ability to locate a tank, as a lot of supplies are in scarce supply these days. Other than that, I think that pretty much answered it.
That was good. Thank you so much. Mr. President, could I ask you something?
Yes, Mayor.
Heath, is there any way that tank could be used for other purposes, like if we chose to serve, use gasoline over at the boat docks?
Possibly so, once we get down and can view the tank and see the actual status of it. Normally, the inside is pristine, because it's held to diesel fuel. Not knowing the exact state until we remove it, sometimes it's still better. Once we see that, we can truly give you an answer, but once we, sometimes also, their purpose, repurposed for other things, such as drainage structures, if they're still intact enough. As far as a new one today, we would take the same requirements as far as cathodic protection and such. I'm chasing a rabbit there, yes. Once we see it, we can review it and give you a proper answer.
So if we did the gas at the boat docks for the boaters on the river, and we didn't do it below ground, we could have one on ground?
Absolutely.
So would you...
There's multiple options.
Would you just consider that and keep that in mind?
Yes.
Because that's something we want to do.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea. Any other comments, questions? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Number 17 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Property Masters Incorporated. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament on December 10th, 2022, at Coussa Landing, and the amount is $35 per boat, not to exceed $1,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 18 is a resolution authorizing First Amendment to property lease agreement with Gadsden State Community College. This adds wording regarding the use of the youth softball and baseball fields to the existing lease dated January 17th, 2020, authorized by Resolution Number R-10-2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 19 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Gadsden State Community College. This is to allow use of Titan Baseball Field at 1500 West Megan Boulevard for baseball practices and games. This is for a one-year term from August 1st, 2023, to July 31st, 2024. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 20 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, ALIA, under the fiscal year 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program. This is for acquisition of a robotic platform that will allow first responders to perform operations in hazardous conditions, as well as perform search and rescue operations remotely, and the amount is $147,187. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I will say, I appreciate the grant and the opportunity to receive this grant. It's obvious it does what it says that it'll do, but it's going to enhance our police department's ability to serve and protect, and also to protect themselves while they do some of these operations that they're, that they perform for us on a daily basis. So this is a real positive for the city. Under first reading, number 21, there's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget. This is related to Agenda Item Number 20 that we just read and voted on, and reflects receipt of the ALIA grant in the amount of $147,187. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Number 22 is new business. Any new business today? Seeing none. Number 23, department reports, committees, boards? Yes. It's Jen, thank you.
Good afternoon, or close afternoon, I guess. So we have a busy weekend here in Gadsden, and I just wanted to share some activities that we are going to have. First of all, is going to have, we're going to host the Christmas tree lighting here at City Hall. The music by the Tub of Christmas starts at 5:30, Christmas tree lighting at 6:00 PM, and the boat parade on the Coastal River at 6:05. We'll have seating for people to come and to enjoy and see our Christmas tree be lit here at City Hall. Another activity is Mistletoe Market. It's happening at the Downtown Civic Center on Broad Street, Friday from noon to 5:00, and Saturday 9:00 to 4:00, and Sunday 9:00 to 4:00. On Saturday, we'll have James Span book signing at 10:00 AM. We'll have Big Sam the Balloon Man there at 11:30, and you can meet the Grinch starting at 12:30. On Sunday, Santa and the Grinch will arrive back by a 10, a T-N train at 1:30, and they will hand out candy and be at the photo booth starting around 1:45. The Christmas parade on Broad Street will be Saturday at 10:00 AM. The Edwall Care Santa Sprint will lead the parade with bands and floats to follow. Christmas at Falls is opening. We open on Thanksgiving night. Tickets are on sale now online at knucklefalspark.com. It's $8 Monday through Thursday and $10 on Friday through Sunday. Tonight, we are closed due to the severe, threat of severe weather. So we will be working with people who have purchased tickets tonight to move them to a different night, but we hope everybody will come out this week and until Christmas, December 23rd, and then we'll open back up after Christmas. Youth basketball jamboree will be held Friday and Saturday at Carver, Walnut Park, Thompson, Mitchell, and the Coliseum. Friday games start at 5:30, and Saturday games start at 9:00 AM. It is $1 at the gate to enter. We'll also be hosting kings of the Coussa High School Championship at the Coussa Landing this Saturday. Thank y'all, and we hope y'all enjoy.
Jen kind of stole one of my points there about the severe weather. That's okay. We do have a risk of severe weather overnight tonight. The National Weather Service just put out a new update, and our prime time is going to be from about 8:00 PM tonight through about 6:00 in the morning, so it's going to be an overnight event. We just want to encourage everybody to make sure that they have multiple ways to hear the warnings. If we're put under a tornado watch, standard procedure is that the tornado shelters in the county will open, and at that time, we'll go ahead and update Shelter Edwall. For those that don't know, shelteredwall.com is a website that we update in real time whenever a tornado watch is issued, and as shelters open, people can go to shelteredwall.com, and it will show them what shelters are open, what shelters allow pets, which ones are handicap accessible, and it makes it easier for folks to know where they're going to go. The one thing that we would encourage everybody to do is, today, while the weather is nice, make your plan. Don't wait till five minutes before the weather gets bad to try to figure out what you're going to do. If you live in a manufactured home, you need to have somewhere starting to go. So we want to encourage everybody to do that. Some of the effects that we can anticipate from this event, this is coming directly from the National Weather Service in Birmingham. Tornadoes are possible, damaging winds up to 60 to 70 miles per hour, gusts sometimes higher than that, and quarter-sized hail, because this will be a protracted event over a period of several hours. We know how flooding usually occurs, and we're anticipating that. I'll be the duty officer for this event. I'm the duty officer this week, so I will be burning the midnight oil to make sure everybody stays safe. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Other than that, just everybody, make sure you have a plan and know what to do.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I suppose, being that there are tornadoes, that the weather, the temperature is going to be warm.
Yes, sir.
So that means warming stations won't be open?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, for this time of year, Councilman, whenever we get dew points up in the upper 50s, low 60s, that's usually enough to drive storms, to go severe. When we get into the summertime, 70 is the magic number that we look at. So this is going to be really the collision of a system that's coming out of the Northwest meeting with moisture from the Gulf Coast.
I'm just questioning basically for, because of course, with cool weather, we have warming stations open for those that, of course, have nowhere to go to stay warm.
Right.
And so, of course, now we have an, a change of weather, okay, where we're about to have a storm, and so it's a matter of where those same people are going to go.
Right.
So just, just something, I know this has been a continuous conversation through, I guess, from my knowledge, a couple administrations. So I hope that we can come to some type of head in figuring out something to aid with these people, and I'm not talking about aid and crippling them and providing them a everyday, all-day solution, but something definitely for something like this.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you. Absolutely. And we do open the shelters whenever there's a tornado watch. As lead times have gotten better, you know, when I was growing up, as a teenager, you know, you might have about 15 or 16 minutes advanced notice. The National Weather Service now can give advanced notice, three or four hours ahead of storms. So that gives people plenty of time, and we try to make sure that everybody has somewhere safe to go. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right. At this time, we have two citizen requests. We all recognize Dr. Kathy Murphy, the president of Gadsden State Community College.
We can bear gifts.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much. It's always a privilege to come and speak to our council, so thank you so much for this opportunity. I'd like to start by just thanking our former mayor, Guyton, and the former council, many of you, who allowed me the privilege to be able to be a part of the Economic Development Academy. It was a terrific experience, and not only did you allow me to have a seat at that table, but you allowed Dean Ken Kirkland to have a seat at the table. Our council president, Back, and also former Councilman Deverick Williams, and our friend David Hooks with IDA, we were able to represent our community, and what a privilege it was for me to be able to sit on that. So I'm so appreciative of that opportunity. I do want to take just this opportunity to congratulate you, Mayor, for your seat. We thank you for raising your hand and your selection, and to all of you, to our president, congratulations for that important seat, and to all of you who've been elected in your respective seats, we do want to commend you. We have some gifts for you, and John Robertson is going to share that with you. John is our Director of Advancement and also Alumni Relations. He's with our Cardinal Foundation. You're going to find a couple of interesting things in there. First of all, I say interesting, there's an umbrella in there. And the thought was, not every day is going to be a fair day as you sit in your seat. There are going to be a few rainy days, and cloudy days, and maybe some stormy days. So there's an umbrella from Gadsden State. You'll also find a notebook portfolio, that's so you can keep a good tally of all your successes and maybe take notation of your strategies for addressing the challenges that you might have. There's also a thermos in there. I'm suspecting coffee is going to be needed. I thought about a whiskey shot glass. It just didn't seem appropriate, so I backed off the whiskey shot glass. We didn't include that for you. But just something simple to say, congratulations and to thank you. I've been president at Gadsden State now for two years, and I've just been re-reminded of some things as I sit in the seat as the president of a community college, and that is, we don't live in isolation of each other. That we don't or should not be living in salows, and that it's not about I, me, and mine, but it's absolutely about us, we, our, and community. And as president of Gadsden State Community College, I want you to know that I get that side of how critical being a community is for all of us. I want to thank you for the sports complex. It's wonderful that you all had a vision, and we had some property, and how nice it is, as I go from my afternoon walks to work out to walk back there, and just to see that place being transformed and morphing into something that's going to be wonderful for our citizens. I believe it's going to be a terrific economic plus for our community as folks come in and we play those games back there, and so just thank you for that vision. Thank you for the resolutions. As we work together for softball, we're restarting softball at Gadsden State, restarting baseball at Gadsden State, and in order to do that, we, we needed your help to allow us to utilize some fields, and so thank you for coming to aid us and support us. So we are here, Gadsden State's here, we're here to serve, we're here to assist. I'm a really firm believer, and for such a time as this, you know, it was, I'm not going church on you, but we may hold hands and do kumbaya before we leave, but you know, it was Mordecai who said to Queen Esther, "It's time for you to stand up, for you to step up, for you to speak up, and for you to speak out on behalf of your people."
That's right.
In that case, the Jewish people. And Mordecai said, "Who knows that you're in that royal seat to serve your people at such a time as this?" And we may chuckle at the thought of being in a royal seat, but I believe that you all are sitting in a royal seat. You're sitting in a royal... You're sitting in a royal seat because you were chosen to sit in that seat, and you're sitting in a royal seat because you were trusted to sit in that seat, and I feel the same thing about my seat. And so, I just simply wanna say thank you. You raised your hand, you were chosen to sit in that seat to serve our people, and I couldn't be more proud for you and for our community as we do this work together. Thank you for the privilege to speak to you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, for those kind words and for our gift packages, and we can talk about the shot glass later, I guess, but that'll, but that was very kind of you. And I, personal moment, I've served on the Workforce Development Academy Committee with Dr. Murphy and Dean Ken Kirkland, along with David Hooks, and it was the vision of Devrick Williams for us to submit an application for the city of Gadsden to be represented in that inaugural class. And the purpose of this workforce academy is workforce development for communities and cities in the state of Alabama. We were fortunate to be in the, in the first group, I think 30 or 31 cities, and I'm proud that Councilman Williams had the foresight to include Gadsden State Community College. We were the only city that did that. Now, this course we took for a year was taught in conjunction with the Alabama Community College System. And it, it didn't get past Mr. Jimmy Baker, who is the chancellor of that system, that Gadsden chose to partner with our local community college. I think we all see the value of the city of Gadsden and Gadsden State Community College. Your comment about the, "We can't be in a silo" could not be more timely and could not be more correct. And I know with this mayor and this council, you'll, we will see that come to, preeminence, continue to work with you as you and your people become, help become the economic driver for the city of Gadsden and for all of Etowah County. It's just a, it's a natural marriage, and it's something that we will take advantage of, and I appreciate your leadership and look, look forward to continued positive relationships that, that serves to lift our entire community.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Could I say something real quick?
You sure can, Mayor Ford.
Yeah. Dr. Murphy's impressive when you started talking Mordecai, and Pastor Smith up here is quoting every scripture before you finish it.
That's right.
So, I just wanna say, he's gonna do my funeral. So, but that was impressive. But I wanna say, also, I had a, I had the opportunity with Dr. Murphy's instruction to be on the hiring committee for the athletic director, who is now Coach Blake Lewis, who's also gonna coach the baseball team. So, we went to lunch the other day. I just wanna lay the groundwork, something that the mayor's office will be coming with, is some partnership with the college again, to help build a championship field for the girls' softball and boys' baseball, 'cause without the city's help, they could not do it. We asked them to bring back the sports. It is shown for every student that goes on scholarship, they'll bring two that pay with them. I think this is something exciting about us in Gadsden. We can get behind a baseball team, a softball team. Everybody in the community wanted this to come back. I've talked to coach, coaches at Gadsden City. They're ecstatic about it, but we, for us to compete, we have to be able to compete with the Shelton States and the other ones throughout the state to be able to bring in some talent in our city. So, I just want y'all to know, we're, we're in the baby steps of that, but we're looking at it, and right now, the city has agreed today as to let the baseball team play on Megan Boulevard for the short time until we can go in partnership with them. So, just letting y'all know, I want everybody to be a part of that with Dr. Murphy, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other? All right. Well, next on our list to speak is Mr. Robert Avery. He's representing Southeastern Regional Economic Roundtable and would like to discuss the Affordable Care Act.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we had a lengthy discussion in pre-council. I'm just here to reiterate what we're doing. The Southern Regional Economic Roundtable represents seven states, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, and Florida. And what we do, we go around, and when we make presentations to governing bodies, we wanna make sure we have a record of it. And since y'all did not tape the pre-council, I wanted to get on the council meeting so we could make this official.
Sure.
What we do is, we make a report back to the federal government. Once we make a presentation to a governing body, and we wanna make sure that we have records that it was made, that you are aware of what we are talking about, and hopefully that will help us when we start asking the federal government for some additional funds for all the municipalities or the governing bodies, then we will have a record that at least you guys were there and you participated in it. Again, the Southern Regional Economic Roundtable is a platform. There's about 60 to 70 people who's involved in this. And again, what we do, we go around to try to educate our communities, making sure that these federal dollars are spent properly. And, and I think in the pre-discussion, we didn't talk about the fact that these dollars are better spent, and the government looks highly unfavorable on monies that are spent in census tracts where the money needs to be spent. And that's another avenue that you can satisfy the regulations when you start spending these funds. You look at those census tracts, and if those census tracts match up to those needs, then of course, you, you've got another clear sailing. But again, I just wanna take this opportunity to let my cohorts know that I did come, I did present this information to you, and like I say, we will have a record of this that when we submit our report to the federal government as to who's been participating and who's not, and where those federal dollars go. So, again, thank you for letting me come.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the information you shared. It's, I think it's very valuable, and I'm sure we'll be looking in, into that and give you a phone call.
Like I said, I'll be back.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Robert. All right, now we come to Section 25, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford, would you care to go first?
Real, real quick, 'cause I know it's hot. I wanna keep y'all posted on what we've done for the past week. Yesterday, we had our first meeting with all 24 department heads for the first time in a long time. I would love for the council to come. The staff meets every Monday morning at 8:30, and then we meet with department heads at 10:00, and we try to get out of there by 11:00. And then each staff of the mayor's office has 415 appointment slots for department heads to meet with in case they need to meet privately with them. I'm available 24/7, but that was a big deal. Had a lot of positive response on that. A big announcement today to the council, and thank y'all for your support. We, our IDA, David Hooks, who the city participates $415,000 in the previous budget, we negotiated out a contract with Etowah County Commission. So, they used to have their own IDA director, Ms. Marilyn Lott. We had ours, Rainbow City has theirs, and we're trying to bring it all under one umbrella and develop unity. And I've told that story before, when I went before Governor Riley, we were all split up, and he said, "When you can all get everybody together and come back, let me know." Today, we made the announcement that we're going into an agreement. It'll start January 1st. The county will put $150,000 into our IDA, and now we'll join our efforts, and there's 15 board appointments, and the county gets two board appointments out of that 15. So, now, even though David Hooks was representing the county for free anyway, 'cause he doesn't just do Gadsden, now he's representing the county, and we're all putting more resources together. We're also approaching the municipalities about also them participating, putting some skin in the game, because he also represents the county as it per se. So, that, that will help his recruitment efforts. That's a big deal. We had a, we did multiple TV interviews, Councilman Wilson supporting our medicinal marijuana. It's gone crazy. We did a video saying we're open for business, and let me tell you, they're open, they're open to come. So, this is fantastic. As I read in the paper, I believe, only 31 cities passed the ordinances, so kudos to the previous council and this council. Y'all, keep in mind, this is not marijuana like you think, growing up in high school. We have a cancer center that is just breaking ground in the near future. They've already bought the property next to Riverview. We have a cancer center at Gadsden Regional Hospital. We're a hub for medical health care within the geographical region, and we have people knocking their doors down wanting to come and try to get in our area. So, this is a fantastic opportunity and economic development project that we have. The marijuana, whatever you call it, is in pill form, and it's given to patients that are terminally ill to help ease their pain through their time of suffering. So, we have probably done five TV interviews. We've had over 40, 50 calls. I've had every lobbyist in Montgomery that I have contacts with, I'll call. So, we divi, decided to develop a committee, and John Moore, Jason, David Hooks, who else? Help me. Is on this committee.
Larry Avery.
Larry Avery, Councilman Avery.
Some folks from the zoning.
And some folks from the zoning. The zoning commission has jumped through the hooch and changed some zoning ordinances ASAP. Y'all, we're on top of it. We're number one. So, they're looking at us, and they're coming to us today. I mean, we're meeting with Fox 6 after this to do an interview about it again. So, it's exciting. It's exciting. The other thing is, please, continue to encourage Channel 99 to your constituents. We're changing that whole station. It's phenomenal. We're, we're interviewing employees. We want y'all to interview people. We just, we have set up a studio down in the chambers, council, on the fourth floor, in the closet behind there. So, it's phenom, it's great what's going on. I've had more compliments about that. We've interviewed like four or five employees, and people love it. They wanna get to know us. And Councilman Wilson, you can do an interview on somebody in your district.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just however you wanna do it. It's open for business. I wanna say one thing about our employees, and I know y'all echo the same sentiment that I do. You know, we, you always hear, "Our employees may not do this, may not do, do that," or what have you. Y'all, let me tell you, we got some fantastic employees. On Thanksgiving Day, while we probably were enjoying our day with our family and traveling or doing what have you, we had Deb Hawkins going over at 5:00, opening up the venue for the community Thanksgiving, employees over there working, and I hate to mention names, but Jen Wellington and her employees getting ready for the train ride, opening night that night, leaving their families Thanksgiving. We had police working shifts, fire working shifts. It's, it's amazing what these city employees do, and I'm ashamed to say, I never noticed it until I got in this position, but man, it's an honor to work for you, and I just wanna say thank you to the employees, and thank you for what you do. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham, would you like to?
I would, just for a second here. I want to kinda echo the words of Dr. Murphy when she said "us, we, and our." I want to give a shout out to Commissioner Washington and the other commissioners for the tree lighting, unit to, the unit to tree lighting ceremony on last night. It was awesome. It was great, and I think it's just the sentiment of not only the city, but the county that we're unified, and that everyone is eager to work together in advancing not only our county, but advancing our city. So, shout out to them.
Thank you. Thank you very much for mentioning that. Councilman Smith?
Yes. I just wanna say thank you to the mayor, to the council, and to the entire staff here at City Hall. We appreciate every single thing you do. I don't think we can say that enough. I wanna first thank everybody who came today. The community involvement is very important. Thank you, Dr. Murphy, for reminding us of these big shoes that's under this desk up here. Councilman Williams, who is a friend of mine, I consider him a mentor, has done a great job, and I had to go all the way to Kansas City to find out that he's not only beloved in Gadsden, but also locally, statewide, and even on the national level. And so, I want him to know how much we appreciate the great work he's done along with others. The second thing, I wanna make sure that we acknowledge Pastor Joe Simmons. I've known him over 30 years, but I had to come to City Hall, the beautiful young lady who gave the history on how this feeding took place. She mentioned him as helping to launch that. And so, he's sitting in the back, back there. I wanna say to Pastor Simmons, "We appreciate your efforts and how this thing grew from there to United Way to the city now, how it's grown to..." I don't know how many we fed this year, but the largest in the state. We appreciate you, and I know you're working on another project there. Hope that you'll be standing before this council soon to tell us about that over there near the church. The last thing, my father is in his final hours, and so, some people may not know, I wanna thank Mr. Avery for being here today, who's also a friend, and we know Mr. Avery hitchhiked as a child to, to hear Dr. King's iconic speech on Washington. You know, we hear a lot of time, "Mr. Avery and two friends." Well, my father was one of those friends, and I just appreciate the fact that Mr. Thomas has gone home, home to be with the Lord. That's Pastor Roderick Thomas, his father. And my father is in his final hours. I'm glad we still have Mr. Avery still here to kind of put some faces with those names of those other two friends to tell us what it was like as a teenager to hitchhike from Gadsden to Washington, D.C. as a teenager to hear this iconic speech in person. I appreciate him if he's still here. He may have left, but I want him to know I'll be leaning on him in the next few days, which will be kind of difficult for us and our family. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. To piggyback right off of Councilman Steve Smith, final comments there. This is why it's important that we preserve those communis, community legacies and those persons and pay homage to those persons that paved the way. So, a lot of people ask me, "Why do I not smile often?" It's because I'm serious about what I do. I'm serious about my community, and I love, I love the people in which I've come from and the shoulders that I stand on. Now, that doesn't mean that I should frown all the time or whatnot, it's just that I want to be taken seriously, and that I mean business. And we can have a good time when we get those whiskey glasses from Gadsden State. Everybody on my left will take one, and then that big guy on the end down there, he'll definitely take one. Okay? All right. So, CCRC 11th Annual Christmas Parade will be December the 10th at 5:30, whereas it's advertised and marketed that we'll start at Cash Savers, just due to the lack of patrol officers that we will, we don't wanna take up all of the force, officers. We're going to shorten that to Joseph T. Robertson. Start at Joseph T. Robertson, and then make our way down to Carver Square, okay? Wanna thank the police force for their continuous years in, in providing us that perfection, protection, and, and starting off our, that Christmas parade there. Also, the Second Annual Cookies with Santa will be December the 3rd at the American Legion Post 322 at North 10th Street from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also, there'll be three families that will be surprised on Christmas Eve with gifts. And so, if there's anyone out there that are listening that have gifts, bikes, clothes, new or newly used that would like to donate to the Carver Community Revitalization Committee, you can get in touch with myself. The new president will be announced soon, and with information concerning how to reach them and get items to them also. I've created and made myself more than available. I, I was, I won't go there, but starting Monday, November the 28th, I've created some hours that I will make myself available here at City Hall in the office. So, so the next dates will be Monday the 5th and Monday the 6th. On Monday the 5th, I'll be here from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00, and on Tuesday the 6th, I'll be here from 9:30 to 3:00 p.m. Then the following week, which is the 12th and the 13th, those same hours will apply for those two days, okay? You can go to our Facebook page, which is Counselor Larry J. Avery, Jr., and you can see all of these updates, a lot of the information that the mayor and administration puts out that is great information, different department heads when it concerns parks and recreation, public works. I, we repost those so that the community can be informed. The biggest thing is to be informed. We also repost Channel 99 stuff, 30, and any other news outlets that, whether we are interviewed or whether they are covering anything in Gadsden, good or bad, we want to, again, make sure that our community, and mostly, of course, with young, with Facebook, it's young people, making that, making sure that young people know to be invited to pre-council and council meeting and all of these other activities that they are informed about parks and wrecks, because it's always stated that there's not anything going on in the city. So, that's the reason why I ask certain questions about parks and wrecks and different other things, and, and, and share those activities, okay? Big shout out to all the small businesses in District 3 and all over the city of Gadsden, but District 3, we thank you so much. I've been making my rounds to each and every business. My goal is to reach, contact, touch, and speak to every business in District 3 to let them know that we appreciate them, their hard work in staying in our community and making it, as we work with other outlets, to make sure that they have resources... making it, as we work with other outlets, to make sure that they have resources and continue on the legacy in the city. Want to, that it has been stated about the warming stations, and I just, I live in a community where I see these ladies and gentlemen on a daily basis, okay? Where they are out here actually staying, sleeping on the concrete pads or under bridges or, you know, there was one time where I purchased the dead end behind my home where I live, and we was providing tents for them to sleep at. This is real, okay? Even in a city as the size of Gaston. And so I have committed my life. My family have also joined in with me and other organizations to make sure that we feed these young and older people. We want to thank Carla Bugs and Pastor Word with Freedom Church and Salvation Army and all of these organizations that put in over efforts and time in looking after others that have less than we do. Finally, as we have passed Thanksgiving, giving homage to, and thanks to, the group that was at Carver. I think that's former Council Thomas Worthy organization, as well as, I think her name is Tanya Baker, and that group that fed a number of people that came out to Carver to receive plates and dinner, and also the organization that fed at the venue for their hard work and all of the bellies that were full on Thanksgiving Day due to the volunteerism and efforts that were put in on that day. These works will never go unnoticed, and we hope that we can one day grow this to where that, again, it's not the same people, but we are utilizing our entire community to impact a greater need. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Real quick, I swear, if it's the last thing I do, I'm going to get this mayor to start saying "medical cannabis" instead of marijuana. So please, I'm asking for his staff to rally with me on that. I also want to say good afternoon to everybody except for the Iranian Men's National Soccer Team. We have an elimination game against Iran in 40 minutes, so that's why I'm going to be brief. I think the trophy for longest closing remarks is about to be taken away from me. I'll leave it at that. And also, welcome to Coach Fries, the new head football coach at Auburn University, and also, even more importantly, welcome to the new assistant head football coach at Auburn University, Cornell Cadillac Williams. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Minatra?
I just want to say I'm thankful for the training and the information that we received when this group attended the National League of Municipalities in Kansas City. And we learned a lot. We got energized, and you'll hear a lot more from us about that visit.
Thank you. Councilman Robertson?
There used to be a crowd out there. They're all gone. Everybody, just stay safe tonight during the storms. Get your plan together if we were to have crazy severe weather. Thank you, Dr. Murphy, for the gift bag. Shot glass would have been nice, but you know, a coffee thermos. Whiskey will go on a coffee thermos, no problem. Maybe the next sport, I'm so happy we do have baseball and softball back, but maybe we can try to get a soccer team up here at Gaston State. I think that would be beautiful. And speaking of soccer, let's go USA. Let's go do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, final comments. We heard from Jen Weddington. We have all kind of fun stuff. We've got a Christmas parade coming up. We've got a boat parade out here. We've got tree lighting, and all that's on Friday night, right? Jen starts at 4:30? Is that when?
Christmas tree lighting. The parade's on Saturday.
Yeah, okay. Christmas tree lighting, 4:30 Friday, and then the boat parade immediately after, and then parade is Saturday morning. Is that correct? All right. Also, speaking of Saturday, Salvation Army's having their annual Christmas roadblock at the Gaston Mall to start at 9:00 through 4:00. I hesitate to say, but I'll be standing out there dodging trucks. I don't want to have to dodge you, so please go slow when you come by through there. I'm not as quick as I used to be, and I'm a lot larger than I used to be. So that's a bad combination. Congratulations to Mayor Ford on the IDA coming together countywide. That is something that has been sorely needed, and I appreciate your leadership and your team's leadership in that area, and of course, David Hooks's leadership as well. And speaking on Mayor Ford, he has brought a really top-notch team with him to City Hall. A lot of us have been meeting with that group, his group, from time to time. Very impressed. Love the energy, love the direction, and just look forward to great things to come from you and from that team. Dr. Murphy, I can't say thank you enough for your friendship and your leadership at Gaston State. You've come to our city from, as Jimmy Baker said, he stole you from Hoover City School System. So we're glad that he did, and we're glad that you're here with your team, and we really appreciate the energy and vision you're bringing. It's a great combination with what's going on in our city and what's going on at our community college. So a big thank you to that. And couldn't agree more with Mayor Ford. One of the things I get asked as a new councilman prior term was, "What do you think about City Hall? What stands out?" And it's the employees. It's the human capital we have that work in the City of Gaston. You couldn't have said it better, Mayor Ford. We have some really good people, some very intelligent, faithful, hard-working people that work for us seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And I agree with you. I couldn't be more proud to be a small part of that. And last but not least, Councilman Smith, we will be in prayer for you and your family. So sorry and so sad to hear the current condition, but you are in our prayers. Thank you, Mr. President. That being said, if nothing further, we stand adjourned.